So we have everyone here and we can get started with our work session. Call that to order. So the first item we want to address is the review of the stormwater management. Best practices, Mr. Barnes, did you want to?
Yeah, the only, I mean, I think you all are satisfied and happy with it. We've just been waiting for Sue Ellen to finalize. She is reviewing it currently, and so what she suggested is that you go ahead and approve it tonight, subject to her final changes that she'll put out and so that we can then introduce it without waiting to the February meeting. To folks, because I know that we've gotten some calls at town hall anxious for it to to come out so people can start applying.
Is she? Okay. Is she just tweaking what we've already done and wording it?
Correct, since it's a whole new program and I kind of invented the the application and everything and we changed it so many times over the discussions. I wanted her to really go through it with a fine tooth comb because if we're going to give somebody money and I've got to report it to the federal government that, you know, it's meeting all the things, I wanted to make sure the language was was all correct. And I gave it to her on December ninth to review for this meeting, but you know how that goes. And and so she just with the holidays, I'll say, and the COVID and everything else, it was.
Got pushed back, yeah. Yep. All right, cool. Any questions on that? The stormwater management? Flood mitigation stuff?
And remember, it'll be up to $4,000 with the 1,500. You get if you put 1,500 up. So it could be a $5,500 project and otherwise you get 2,500 and it can go for renters insurance and all those list of things that you all talked about.
Rod, is there gonna be information about the entirety of the program maybe on Edmiston's website?
Yeah, a flyer will go out, the newsletter that's going out next week. And then and then all the details will go up on the website and then we'll go door to door with another flyer. Once we're satisfied, so yeah.
Does it have anything in there that council is or is not eligible to participate?
I don't think we had it. You all didn't talk about that.
Well, that's a, I think that's a.
Right now, you're eligible, but unless you exclude yourselves.
No, I just wanted to make sure that the council is eligible because whereas we're not eligible for a lot, but you are, I said, you are. But we are residents as well and we're volunteer residents for our positions as council.
And we're also victims of, you know, just like everybody else.
Absolutely.
Even Sarah kind of laughed at that one.
Oh, you know, I'm applying, so.
And you know, it always gets me when we, you know, we know eventually we'll have to raise taxes. You know, it's just, it's gonna happen, but it it appears that it is us saying we have to raise taxes and it's not going to affect us when it does, because we live here too. And I think it's hard for people to see that. It affects us as well. The next item, so everybody's good? I think we did good in the deliberation. Sarah, did I phrase that right? Deliberation of this flood mitigation. Best practices, Gant, Grant, Grant.
Oh, we're gonna call this a Gant, the Gant project.
Gant project.
The Gant Grant.
The Gant Grant.
It's amazing how many towns are doing this. There are a number of them, Berwyn Heights, Chevrolet. Hyattsville, I think, is even doing some stuff with, so yeah, Riverdale Park.
You know, I was gonna say that I talked to some town and they they didn't do it. And I was shocked that they didn't have any little thing for it, you know, like $100. But they said they just didn't do it. But the majority are. The next item is approving ordinance 22 dash OR dash eight, which modifies our personnel policies. Especially our police department. Chief Beal, if you want to highlight that, or Mr. Barnes. I think we're all in agreement. It's just a common sense kind of thing.
Yeah, that's all it was, was getting off to actually want to work on holidays. At first, they were getting paid to be off. So kind of a way to get them to work is by only allowing how they pay for days they actually work in that all.
And they're clear in there saying that.
Yeah, and then you would you had made Juneteenth and Christmas Eve as holidays, but while you had passed it in a motion, she's now incorporating that right into that same section. It happens to be in that same section in the personnel book, so those are now official holidays.
Cool with everyone?
Yep.
And thank you, chief. And what about the work session and regular meeting minutes? Any questions, concerns? Updates? All right, good, great. And so I believe that I want to go into closed session to discuss further about our consideration of Alexander Cleaver as the town attorney, not because I have serious concerns or anything like that, but my preference is a closed session to just give a few comments that I might have and any comments Mr. Barnes has.
Before we go on that, do you want to do the other two ordinance that we're bringing up today?
Yeah, yep, thank you.
And then go on to close session, then we can probably just goof off until seven.
Right, because there's nothing that needs to wait until the regular meeting. The next one is.
Could we also maybe have a quick discussion about how if we want to keep doing these meetings virtually, or if we might want to transition to coming back into the town hall?
I don't know why I thought we did, but absolutely. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, like if I I know I missed December's meeting, so I'm absolutely like, I don't want to.
I don't even know if it was December. I think it was before that, yeah, yeah, but.
I put it on the, I put the calendar on this work session and I put all the meetings as virtual, but I I was hoping, I think you all had decided last time you were gonna have some more discussion about it and make a decision. Yeah.
That's cool. So let's go through this and then we can go back to through that while we're doing our calendar.
Didn't we, didn't we decide if you wanted to come in, you come in?
Yes.
Yeah, I think like a hybrid.
Yep, that's what we talked about. You're correct. So why don't we go ahead and talk about that now? Since that's where Mr. Johnson is, especially since he's on the phone and he can't see what we're saying. So so let's open up that discussion. I don't know if everyone is in agreement with your church choice, hybrid. The only thing with that is we have to prepare Rick, so he would, I believe, he would have to prepare every time for hybrid. Which means he comes into town hall and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Rick or or Ms. Avery. That's if we decide we want to do hybrid. If we decide we want to do virtual for a little while longer, considering COVID has come back. We can do that, or we can go back and make some adjustments as to where we sit. So floor is open.
Well, since there is a rise in the COVID and whatever helps this new little virus that's going around, I would prefer we either do the stay as we are or go hybrid. That's what others want, but for me to, for everybody to go back in until springtime, I'd rather wait and hold off a little bit.
Springtime meaning like March. Oh, I said, did you hear that?
Yeah, I would say April, May, or, you know, wait until the next, after the election.
I think March is probably a good time to just visit it and have another conversation.
To visit, yeah.
Yeah, according to what we decide now. Mr. Turberville, you brought it up.
I was curious about, like, Rick, if it's, I mean, is it technologically feasible to do hybrid? Because I know Hyattsville, they like, they're having some issues with that, like they either have to be there, all of them have to be there, or they all have to be virtual because of an inability to do like webcast and cable TV at the same time. Would we suffer from that same problem?
I don't know if Mr. Rick is on here. Tonight was a conflict with him and trying to help make all this work, but he does a hybrid in Bladensburg.
Okay.
Of some sort, I think, I know.
They, yeah, they went back to one or the other. I forget what it was, but they were hybrid, you're right.
They were doing a hybrid.
But I don't think it worked for just that reason.
I think they're doing a Zoom, because I saw, you know, last, last night, Monday night, whatever, yeah, last night, it was all Zoom.
Yeah.
No, I've got no objection with hybrid if it's if it's technologically feasible.
If it's not.
I mean, they make no difference to me.
Bladensburg is all Zoom, according to Rick.
Okay, so what, do we want to stay Zoom until March?
Yes.
And bring the and have the discussion in March?
That's fine with me. I'm I'm flexible, so.
All right, Ms. Chester?
Yeah, I'm also super flexible, don't have any sort of vulnerabilities either way, so I'm fine.
Okay, I kind of volunteered you for a meeting next week. Oh, okay. All right, so we'll just stay as we are. Thank you for bringing that up. It's good to have the discussion, though, to see where we are, you know, kind of get a gauge.
I'm at Edmiston.
While Mayor, while we're talking about council meetings, there are three months out of the years I was putting the calendar together where the work session night falls, the second Tuesday of the month falls the night before the council meeting. And it happens in February and it happens in March. March, we can use, it is a budget work session, which that works fine. But I didn't know if you wanted to not do that and do them on the same night, or if you wanted to leave them as separate nights. You, there was some discussion at the last meeting about going back to our second Tuesday work sessions and our, I mean, our first Tuesday work sessions and our second Wednesday meetings and keeping to them, so I just needed some feedback on that.
So for me, I don't have a problem with the one night work session, the next night, the meeting. Because the meeting for the work session would really be a short one. And then the next night, you know, we're just voting in, which will make it shorter unless something happens. So, but I know maybe for some double night might be an issue, but I'm usually good Tuesday and Wednesday.
It doesn't matter tonight.
Yeah, I mean, my my preference is a single night for all of it and just from a.
One and done?
Yeah, just from a a childcare logistics standpoint, but if it's, if people would prefer to have shorter meetings on two nights, I can absolutely make that work too, so.
No, I think Ms. Chester brought it up because she needed, I mean, it was good to work some things out and have that time to work it out and then have a meeting because sometimes we were going over. The other thing is we could gauge it. If we know we have a hot topic or something that we have to work out, maybe we should do separate. But if not, the one and done is it it works out for, you know, for us for the most part. Are you in agreement, Ms. Chester?
Yeah, I and I agree. There were just a couple, I think of, like with this stormwater thing, where we probably needed to spend kind of just more time sort of hashing it out. And when we had the meetings back to back, it kind of made things maybe a little rush. We can certainly look at our agenda and anticipate that, you know.
Right, all right.
Okay, thank you.
My, I'm using my tablet for the agenda and you know how you have the password set? And I keep putting in my old password instead of my new one. All right.
What's your new password?
Yeah. Sure, so the next item is Mr. Barnes, it's the painting of the outside of the home with no paint? And discoloration?
This is probably one of the first times since I've been here in eight years that we've had a code officer make recommendations on some things that make her job, in this case, her job easier and clarify issues that she's run up against in in the community. So in our property maintenance coach, we we held a Zoom meeting with Sue Ellen, Anna, myself and chief, I think the chief could not attend that day. He got called away to a call. But one of the things she wanted to do, address was because I had hounded her and hounded her about the little yellow house at the corner of 51st and Decatur. If you notice, the front parts of it, the paint is just peeling off something horrible above the porch and around the fascia. And so I told her, I says, isn't there some way we can make those folks at least just put a coat of paint on there? And when she looked in our code, she could not. So what Sue Ellen has done is added to the property maintenance, she added the words flaking, scaling, or peeling paint or large cracks and then adding that it has to be covered with paint or other manufactured product designed for use as an exterior finish or surface.
So if a house is this color, the color has faded, but it's still not peeling, not flaking, then that gets left alone.
Right.
Okay, then I'm good with that because paint fades, but it's still good.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, this is just the flaking and the scaling and the peeling is what she was trying to address.
So we're trying to do this so that we can kind of make them go ahead and paint it.
Yeah, she can, it'll be a code violation if they don't.
Right.
Um. You know, I'm not sure that I support this, like targeting, like if you live, and I'm just speaking from personal experience here, but if you live in a historic home and you don't go about sort of like refinishing and and redoing paint that is that's stripping away in the exterior on the facade that's like front facing to the street. You can be in violation of, you know, like if you don't do it the proper way or whatever. You can be in violation of of the rules around sort of, you know, being on the historic property list. And it is extremely expensive to do the kind of painting and weatherization that is required under those historic home rules. So I think about somebody like myself, right? Like I would be running afoul of this due to the condition of of some parts of my home that face the front of of my street.
I I've seen your house and you wouldn't be in violation.
But it's it's subjective, like.
It's not subjective. If you go down and look at the house at 51st and Decatur, it it's clearly, it's an empty house. It's the paint's peeling all off. It it looks, if you're driving down Main Street, Edmiston, it looks absolutely deplorable. And it isn't in a condition to condemn it and demolish it. It just needs a coat of paint on that exposed exterior that has had paint that's peeled off. And I bet you, I bet you, you couldn't find more than maybe three homes in Edmiston that have this condition, if if at all, other than that one.
So what's, so what is the requirement again?
They would have to cover that with exterior paint or whatever other material is applicable for exterior.
What, I'm sorry, what are the, what triggers it? What's the specific?
The peeling, scaling, cracking, I think is what the words say. It says flaking, scaling, or peeling paint breaks, large cracks, the breaks is already in our ordinance, same as loose or rotting boards or timbers, that's already in the ordinance. Which might admit rain or dampness to the interior portions of the walls. It's also in the current ordinance that brick, aluminum, copper, masonry, stone, stucco, our decay resistant wood can be used, treated woods can be used. So it just simply addresses that one situation where the paint is just peeling so bad.
And I guess I think what's hard is that the other the other conditions that are in that code, holes, rotting wood, you know, rotting logs, cracks, like those really are health and safety related and and whether your paint is peeling, it's like a a real spectrum of like aesthetics to becoming health and safety. And I just, I think.
What if that?
This coloration, you know, to Pepsi's point, like discoloration, you know, could be an indicative of water damage and water infiltration and mold and mildew could be just sun on, you know, one side or, you know, cheap siding that isn't weathering well. I mean, there's, I think, when it comes to some of these new categories, there is, it's not as clear cut that it's a, it is indicative of damage that is going to impact health and safety, which is what that whole that, you know, section is about. And and if there's.
No, property maintenance is about maintaining your property in a good and orderly fashion. Whether it's landscaping, we've got strict rules on landscaping in here. You got to have brush that's cut, picked up. You can't have dead trees. Your driveway has to be a certain way. This is just one more of those items. I've never lived in a town that did not have this. And it leads, stops, or keeps from, I mean, what we had to do on Hamilton Street in tearing a house down. Because if you're putting a, if you're putting a coat of paint on that part that's peeling and cracking and coming off, then you're going to save that house that much longer without being completely destroyed.
And what if that paint that's peeling is lead based?
Yeah, they have to remove it. But we're, I don't think we're going to say that you can't encapsulate it.
Yeah.
By scraping it and painting it, but we we don't have that in the ordinance.
No, but I'm saying if if it's lead based, it's flaking to the ground, contaminated ground. And if they paint over it, then they're, they're saving.
One of the attractive features of a community is the appearance. I mean, I know it it, we don't like to legislate a lot of rules and regulations. But when people select a community to go live in it, they look for a community that has attractiveness. That's why we spend a lot of money on landscaping in this town, the green environment. That's why we spend money to keep up the streetlights, the gazebo, the parks. We want it all to look attractive and inviting. Well, it's the same situation with a home. We want our homes, we know they're hardworking, and that's why we have an Edmiston Beautiful Grant. We've painted the fronts of over 30 homes in Edmiston as a result of the Edmiston Beautiful Grant program. And it was all flaking, peeling, cracking paint on the fronts of homes that seniors couldn't afford to have corrected.
I mean, I.
Even our own town hall, we had to take care of that. Remember how bad that looked?
I I don't disagree with with any of that, right? That like, you know, we want to be able to keep the town as lovely as we can. I think when it comes to town property, we've got a whole, you know, of course, we've got all the wiggle room in the world is the mayor and the council to decide what we want to do. But I think Hillary's right that when it comes to upkeep around homes and property of individual homeowners that there has to be, I think, a health and safety concern, right? Like that's the overriding government interest. Otherwise, like we're just serving as like an HOA, which homeowners have not consented to when they bought a house here, so. You know, so so I, I mean, Rod, I'm not, I I totally agree that the house on 51st and Decatur is an eyesore and something needs to be done. But we can be just a minute, okay? So. But it gave me just a few minutes, okay? So put that on the floor. So I mean, so I guess I would feel more comfortable if this had some sort of wording that's like peeling and cracking that presents a public health hazard. Right? And then that's a determination that the code enforcement officer can make. You know, and say that like for whatever reason, you know, this is significant enough that, you know, we're concerned about water coming into the exterior of the house or worried about chips of lead paint ending up on the sidewalk where, you know, that kind of thing, so that there's like a specific health and safety hook to it.
And I guess, you know, that's the section it's going into is standards and so that all of those things there are landscaping of premises, sanitation, grading and drainage, nauseous plant growth, insect and rodent harbage, open storage, accessory structures, all of those things you legislate currently. Vehicle firewood storage and how you can store your firewood. So you get into a lot of issues about property maintenance. And so this, one more item added into this section would be this, this item. I don't have any problem, Sarah, at all suggesting back to to Sue Ellen to come up with language about health and safety.
That there's some threshold that, you know, when someone's exterior paint and condition is now posing
the health. I mean, the threshold is going to be the code officer's view of it and what she determines is whether they meet the standard or not. I don't know that you could say.
Not, that's what I'm not comfortable with.
You could say, okay, there's 50% of the paint surface is peeling. There's 100% of the surface peeling. There's 25% of the surface is peeling. I mean, you could get into really great detail if you wanted about a, when you're talking about forcing a standard on that. But you know, the house that at 51st and Decatur is probably 25% of the house is all that's peeling. Because the rest of the house is a material that doesn't, it may be faded, but but it's not peeling. So I don't know how, I mean, I I think Hillary, that the code officer would have to have some subjectivity in terms of what was in violation.
Then I guess the clarity that the threshold isn't attractiveness, the threshold isn't, you know, beautification necessarily, or that it really is that something is deteriorating, deteriorating to the point that it is now sort of a risk to occupants, a risk to the community, a risk that that it fits in that health, safety, community interest, not just attractiveness as a factor or.
You know, we might be saving the homeowner a bigger expense. A hundred dollar worth of paint to take care of that peeling might save them from being a $5,000 replacing wood, replacing, you know, the siding, replace the windows, because.
Sure, but I mean, that's not our, not necessarily our role to try to help people make better choices. I mean, that's.
In your existing ordinance. In your existing ordinance, you say that exterior walls and exposed surfaces. Have to be covered. So you're not changing anything with this, other than you're giving the code officer some clarification of what. She, when she looks at that house and whether that exterior wall is exposed, what does that mean exactly? It means, is there cracking, peeling, uh, paint? Is there open cracks? That's what you're defining for her to make her job easier.
If it's peeling, it's not covered.
Okay, so that's gonna open up. So this is my point though, is that like, if we're saying that peeling paint is something that the code officer can come and tag people for. Then that means that like, uh, most homes in town. Are not going to be up to code irrespective of whether or not it's actually any threat to the home itself or public safety. And I just worry about, so, look, when I, when I look, I, I get the intention behind this and I support that, you know, I, I really do. But I just feel like we have to be careful because let's say one day. Rod is not our town administrator and our current code enforcement officer is not our code enforcement officer. And instead we have people who are like. You know, individuals that look at the code as a way to, we can harass individual residents. I've heard enough about like the history of Edmiston and governance to know that like, that has happened with some of our public officials. And this gives them free license to target people like, and harass for issues that have nothing to do with public health and safety. So like, let's think about what, what happens when like, this is in the wrong hands. Like, how can we make sure that our residents are protected from abuse, right? And I think one way to do that, a resident could be like, yeah, I've got a little bit of peeling paint. This is like, nothing, stop harassing me about it. This is not a public, this isn't a public safety issue versus the situation up on Decatur where it's like, the whole front facade is peeling off. Like.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I mean, I'm fine with it, if you want to not approve it, it's, it's fine. Because this came obviously from our code person wanting to try to make her job better and easier. And so I, I can't defend what she, um, her reasoning, cuz I, I, you know, I can't speak for her. I just know this is one of the items when she listed out, uh, six different items for making the code better. For her in terms of compliance, that this was one of the key ones. And so. It's purely up to you folks. If you, if you think it's too stringent to ask people to paint their homes, then don't pass it. Kind of simple. We already have, we already have, you can't have rotten wood, you can't have breaks, you can't have holes. You can't have uh, timbers or conditions that anything would admit rain. Well, that's purely subjective. Somebody could do the exact same thing that you guys are saying that you would do, you could argue with a, a peeling piece of paint. If, if you, I go to you and say that board doesn't look good, it's rotted and it's letting water in, you could say back, no, it isn't. I've got something behind it. And there's no problem with it. So it, you already have a lot of, of subjectivity in the ordinance that she's dealing with. So that's why I believe she was asking for better clarification on this particular issue and probably. To get the town administrator offer back about that particular home.
Well, and, and again, we don't have to say like, we can't talk about paint. I mean, it's not one or the other. It's not.
No, I think it is because you can't create, I don't believe. Um, a system where everybody, what Sarah's saying, the next code officer would view it the exact same way. So unless you can come up with some kind of standard that says it's twenty-five percent or fifty percent. Or the paint is uh, lead based and it's, it's creating a health and, and safety, then you really can't. You really can't guarantee what Sarah is trying to accomplish. And I get that, I understand. We don't, we want. It to be treated the same way by everybody and not subject to their opinion, cuz we get that from the county already enough. With permitting and licensing, we don't need to get that from the town too. So yeah, I get it. So I'm, we're okay. We can, you know, Anna and I will go back and, and chief, we'll go back and we'll work on some. On uh, reviewing some other ordinances that other towns have, how they determine how they do it, and then we'll bring it back to you for further discussion. But um, I appreciate your comments that you guys are making. I think sometimes, um, and we, we've talked about this in strategic plans and maybe sometimes I get too focused on. The appearance of the community and you guys don't get. I, I, my standard of living for a home is not to have furniture on the front porch, not to park in the front yard, not to have a fence. Um, you only park where you're supposed to, where your guys' standards may be something totally different. And so sometimes I forget that and I apply my standards to say, thinking. The whole, every home should look like, you know, this, there shouldn't be a bunch of stuff in the yard, there shouldn't be things on the porch. Does that make sense? And I think that's part of what this case is, is that, you know, um. Like I said, I don't see only a couple of homes in town that have this condition and uh, they're both vacant. And so, um, the, the homes that are occupied and the homes that we've worked with, with the grants, we solve this problem. Quickly, um, so that we keep it from becoming deterioration. But you know, there's lots of philosophy that once a, one house starts deteriorating. The house next door starts deteriorating, the next door, the whole block starts deteriorating and it, it kind of feeds, decayed, feeds decay. And so if we can keep that from happening, that's always been my philosophy, but I, I hear your.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm, I, I'm in agreement with that. I think it's just sort of. You know, I can't help but just come from a perspective of, of also just wanting to.
Yeah, yeah. We don't want it to be a hardship for anyone.
Yeah, yeah.
And we don't want it to be burdensome. I get it, I get that. And so we get, we just gotta go back to the drawing board and figure that out. Figure out if there's a way to make it more clear without it becoming a burdensome, um, issue for a homeowner. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, um, I mean, maybe there's a way to work in. The issues of vacant that, if it's primarily the vacant hu- vacant, vacant homes that are the problem. I think you can make a real like health and safety argument for the peeling paint issue with those, right? Because there's no one there. To like, say like, hey, it's okay or it's not, you know?
Yeah, maybe that's, maybe that's the key, is it, it's a vacant home versus um, occupied or something. Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll do more research.
And then that could also have like, you know, I'm all about like deterrence to prevent people from like, you know, just letting these vacant homes sit there like that, right? Because that's super problematic.
They're working on that one, uh, on the inside. I don't know how long, but it's gonna take, but it can't become the mayor's coffee shop.
Not if I'm gonna have to pay to get, get it painted. No, I was just gonna say that, um, I think all of it should be included. You know, I think that the health, safety and the look, um, the appearance needs to be included. Because we have to set a standard. Um, the great thing is it is vacant. I was even thinking, um, I don't know if Sarah can hear me, but when she purchased her home.
Here, I'm here, I'm just off camera.
You, you knew it was historic. So if we had, um, something in place that said. Um, due to chipping, painting, blah, 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 I mean, not painting, chipping, cracking, peeling, uh, whatever else. Right, if we had that already in place, you would know that going in. And we would have set the standard before you said, I do. Um, and so I think that we do need to have things in place for people who, um, join the non HOA. Because, um, if you don't have a standard, I, my way of living is totally different from another person's way of living. And if we have a main street that we're trying to advertise, that we're trying to, um. Market in a sense, we want people to live here. We don't want vacant and blotted homes. So there has to be a standard of living that, um, or the appearance of a standard of living. Um, that people should have going in. Um, the good thing, this one is vacant. And we can place that, um, uh, restriction or ordinance or whatever on them. And those who purchase, then they'll know. It, it's, it's, it's whatever the, um. The, um, agent does, they'll inform them of our, our policies, our ordinances. So I think we have to have a standard and I think we have to figure out how to put all of it together, um, where it is. Everything is not fair, but where it is, um, sort of fair in a way, that won't be financially a burden. And then we need to look at, if the person does not comply, will we do it and give them a payment plan to pay? So we have to think about that too. But I think especially on the main street, um, really throughout, but especially on the main street. I think there has to be a standard. There's a standard for, uh, fences. And I think there should be a standard for, um, the way that the home looks. If I know I'm on the main street and I already know going in when I purchase it. Have to keep my house a certain way, I'm gonna do it. But that's me. You know, we have to have rules for others too. So great conversation.
I didn't know that my house was historic when I bought it. When I tried to put gutters on it and all of a sudden I couldn't put on the gutters that I wanted. Had to spend three times the amount for some gutters.
Oh, yeah, we probably didn't know it was historic either, so that's why you didn't.
Has a plaque on the front of it.
Well, now it does. Well, once I got the.
It's great, great discussion. Thank you.
So we get to driveway composition.
What'd you say?
I said, wait till we get to driveway composition.
I know, because that's next. And the thing is, I think we had this conversation years ago. I, I remember with these driveways, especially with the driveway on. What is it, forty-seventh and Gallatin? Um, I, I remember.
We've had driveway conversations way back when I was first on council. That seems to be every two or three year. Started up again.
Yeah, well, let's go. Who is this? Um, uh, Eric or, um? I don't know.
It's me again.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, Anna brought this one also, is she dealt, um, this past year with, um, numerous driveways that. Were issues and so what, uh, Sue Ellen would codify or are put into the code would be that driveways and associated parking pads. Must be constructed of brick, concrete, asphalt, stone, pavers. Are an equivalent hard dustless and bonded surface material pervious or semi pervious included. But not limited to pervious asphalt and concrete, open joint pavers and reinforced glass gravel shell. Um, grids is encouraged. So this would pretty much allow anything, gravel. Um, but it would be no dirt. You could not have a dirt pad to park on.
And the grass sounds like.
We couldn't do grass, no. It has to have a surface, one of these surfaces.
You could have gravel or you couldn't have gravel?
You can have gravel.
You can have gravel. It also says it reinforced grass gravel shell grid is encouraged.
Yeah, so it can have grass.
Let's reinforce grass.
That's, that's my figure. That's when I read that. What would be reinforced grass?
That's with pavers. So when you put down pavers, grass goes over the top of those.
Okay.
There's a example, Kenneth has one right down from you, um, Betsy. He did one right there on, between the tree and the, and the, um, shed.
Okay.
He put in pavers and then now it's all just grass, but it, there's pavers there.
Okay.
Um, it's a form, you know, a triangular form that goes down.
Yeah, I saw that. I was like, what the heck is this?
So I mean, we might need to clarify that better.
Yeah, this is tangentially related, but I wonder if we wanna do anything to incentivize people putting down. Um, permeable.
Well, that's in the grant.
Rather than on asphalt.
That's in the grant. You can apply for a pervious surface in the grant. And this says you can put down, it, it obviously says pervious asphalt and concrete. Um, is one of the things you can do. But, uh, the incentive that we have, the only incentive we have to give to them, other than if you write a check to them. Is the grant program where they can get twenty-five hundred dollars back if they did that. And they can get it, they can get rain tax dollars back from the county if you do that. That's one of the, uh, one of the things on that program.
Is there like a timeframe for how something like this would be rolled out because there are. Likely a lot of non-compliant?
I don't think there, I don't think there's anyone in not compliant. She's dealt with all the ones that potentially were, um, non-compliant. She's asking for this to be inserted to make it easier for when she deals with future, with future issues. She dealt with a big one over there on, uh, the corner of fifty-first and Crittenton. They put in a, a dirt pad forever and ever and ever and she finally had to, you know, enforce. Uh, it's where Mrs., uh, not Mrs. Roberts, um, the little lady that had dementia that moved out of, across from Vicky and. I'm sorry?
It was Miss Jean's house.
Yes.
But, yeah, they cleared it and then just couldn't seem to.
Get any kind of surface down other than the dirt. And so it was coming out onto the street constantly, mud and dirt. But we have lots of gravel, a lot, I mean driveways and we have, uh, like we said, McKenna has the pervious. We have concrete, asphalt.
Um, most of this has already been in the code.
So what are we saying? So we're just specifying.
The types. Concrete, brick, asphalt, stone, pavers, hard dustless and bonded surface material. So if it's grass with pavers, if it's, uh, gravel.
I don't understand the grass with pavers. I can't visualize that.
Yeah, you need to, when you're going by the Kenneth's house, take a look at his.
Yeah.
He did the drive, his drive comes in and he did the, the paver, grass, um, imp- pervious thing off to the, um. To the right of it.
And you said something else after all of that. What was the last thing?
Uh, but not limited to pervious asphalt.
You said something about dust.
Oh, yeah, it can't, uh, it's gotta be a bonded surface ma- material. Um, that is equivalent hard and dustless, so it can't create dust.
What's that, Sarah?
Sarah sent a, an example of the grass paper.
Of like a, yeah, the paper with grass.
Lana, I need you when you come back. She's so techie.
Oh, right, right, right.
Sarah is quick. She's like a millennial or the ones.
But I'm not a millennial.
I know, you're like.
That's a perfect example, Sarah. Okay, I, I don't know, share the screen.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, is that the thing that I was asking about?
Yes, yes.
Where is it? Did you share it?
No, I haven't.
No, I'm looking.
It's there in the chat. If you click on the.
Yeah, I'm looking now.
Oh, okay. It's really cool.
It's grass. It looks like grass. No, it looks like I'll get one half of it and that's just it. Oh, so that's where you put the two, oh, it's grass in the middle and the two, oh.
The grass grows up around it and the pavers. The grass grows up around it and the pavers are in the, in the.
Kind of under your tire tread.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. Thanks, Millie. I think.
So it's semi-hard surface.
Oh, that's the cheaper way to do it. That's good.
I don't know if it's cheaper.
Yeah, oh, you don't think so?
Not, I mean, I don't think it's cheaper than like gravel or chipstone, to be honest.
I wouldn't.
Have you seen the price of gravel?
You have to prepare a base for this.
Yeah.
And, and you have to probably, you may even put gravel down as the base, so it's probably more expensive.
But it's more eco-friendly for sure.
Right, yeah.
Most, as, as Sarah has to deal with the extra cost of historical, um, most economically, I mean, most eco-friendly solutions are also more cost. Okay, so there, there, if you go down on the page, there's a pickup setting on a, on a really truly um, pervious, so without the grass. Then the, uh, grass will grow up eventually between those.
Yes, it's cool.
Okay, so are we, do we need to change this one?
No, I'm good with it. Everybody's good with that? Mr. Turberville, you don't get it's um, any stress on anybody's pocket or if.
Say that again, Madam Mayor.
You're just so, no, I said, you, you're not concerned that it's going to hurt anyone's pocket or, you know, cause anyone to go into poverty or anything like that? You're so cool. Okay.
I just hope we don't see a big flurry of people paving with non-pervious, you know, people throwing down a lot of non-pervious concrete.
I don't imagine so, because that is the most expensive.
I hope that with, yeah, with the grant and the promotion of the rain tax grant program that, you know, people won't do that because they can get the money to do it the alternative way.
You know, we could do a commercial too.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree with you, Mayor. I think I should do a neat little commercial.
Yeah. So we'll start pushing.
Yeah, um, and you know, when you Betsy walks the whole town all the time and all the rest of you do too, to some degree. You're not, you don't see very many driveways that are gonna be any kind of problem.
He said, Betsy walks the whole town. Oh, yeah, and some of you do occasionally. Did you hear?
No, I mean, she, she literally.
No, that's all right.
Every block, you guys sometimes take shortcuts.
She, she has to walk, um.
The first dog has.
What's, oh, man, Taz.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, good. So we're good with this, right? So we're good with this. We're good with the, are we going to, I wanna go back to the chip paint. So are we revamping that and bringing it back again? Yeah, okay. But we are good with the um, the driveway material, right?
Yep.
All right, cool.
She's also working on two more for you, the, the noise with the um, ice cream trucks and um, permitting for fences under four feet.
Oh, you know, I wanna, I wanna quickly talk about the ice cream truck. Um, though I really do wanna go into the closed session to talk about um, Alexander Cleaver. Um, and maybe uh, Chief, you could tell me this. Is it, um, is it more work for, for um, Anna and the police officers to stop the violators? Um, as opposed to you receiving complaints from residents about the music being played?
Um, it's easier for us to um, identify the violators. Sometimes we try to identify prior to getting a call. But if we're basically on a police sat or court enforcement isn't in the office, um, it, we're welcome to receive the complaints from the neighbors as well.
Cause I was thinking that um, I know we have the ordinance about the music, but I was thinking that it's just more work for you to say, no, don't play that, don't play that, than residents actually calling and complaining.
Um, it, it is the same feedback both ways around. Um, once we tell them the damn about it, it's their notice on this, we don't really have any kickback from them. Um, they turn the music down. Sometimes they try to turn it back up slowly but surely. But once we tell them we're gonna issue a citation, that seems to eliminate the whole uh, arguing back and forth.
And then the other thing is, I don't, I didn't think that it was the, the volume, but whereas it might be at a certain time. But I thought it was playing Christmas music in July. I thought it was.
It's more sort of the value. It's the value that serves the peace of uh, the public. So once it goes above that certain um, ordinance that we have, then they're violation. So we do have the sound meter, we just have to send Anna to the uh, certified class.
And do we have a, a time for them? Like, is it a cutoff to sell the ice cream like ten o'clock at night or?
They can't sell at eight to nine o'clock. And they can't ring the bell um, during daytime hours. They can't ring the bell at all in town.
But it says in our ordinance is, it's unlawful for the owner, operator or person in charge of a vehicle vending ice cream, soft drinks or other products on the streets or highways of the town to ring or permit the ringing of bells continuously by electronic means except for mechanical bells or operate any other signaling device playing music or voice at any time. And I believe, Chief, that's where she was having the concern is what, you can ring a bell by hand, but you can't play one continuously. But then it says you can operate any other signaling device playing music or voice at any time.
Yeah, so that's the one she wanted to clear up, um, because it is a confusion and.
Like the mayor was saying, like the mayor was saying.
It, it becomes a confusion on trying to identify if there was a mechanical bell or if there was the music. Um, so we encounter that, we normally just give them a warning so that they just can't ring the bell inside the town. Um, because most of them don't have permits to even sell inside the town. Um, so unless they got the permit, we work that once we stop them, if they have a permit, we just let them continue to make the money they need to make. Um, but if they don't have a permit, then all action stop.
I don't know if that answers your question, Mayor.
So what are we asking?
So.
So basically, if they have, if they have a permit, we allow them to go ahead and continue selling inside the town.
Right.
Um, we don't allow.
What about the bell?
So we're allowed to ring the bell too, um, because they have a town permit. Now, that's where it gets tricky yet, because that's what the order says, that you can't ring the bell. Um, so that's what we're trying to ask for clarification for, so that way it's easy for her to enforce it. Because if she stops somebody for ringing the bell and then they pull out the permit, it kinda makes it harder for her to enforce it.
I think when that was way back, it was any electronic bells, it had to be the regular.
Yeah.
No, not the electronic noise.
I think that's what she's trying to clarify.
Yeah, that's, I remember when we did this, it was supposed to be just non-electronic bells, music, you know, could be played and no talking over loudspeaker. I don't know, but Trace, if you remember the one guy that used to, that was some nonsense. It was just supposed to be non-electronic bells are the only thing they're allowed to ring. And no beep in the horn.
Is, is it possible that, um, you know, we've, I know everyone that comes in the town is not working with burliners, but the majority do, correct, Chief? Is it possible to?
Well, no, most of them, they don't work for Burliner, he just allows them to park their, their location.
Is it possible to meet with them or their representative and preferences, them um, to have this discussion? Because just like um, uh, phones have changed, um, uh, you know, letting people text at work as opposed to when we went to work, we didn't text, we didn't have phones. Um, times have changed. So is it that everything is now going electronic because of the type of vehicles they're getting as opposed to ding 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 like Mr. Um, Softy? So we might need to have a conversation to see how things have changed. And then maybe we can come up with a good plan as to um, what we want coming through the town and whatever. Because I know um, the residents like the ice cream man, meaning ding 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 or oh, hello, whatever it is. So I think we should meet with them, find out some stuff, and then we can even lay down some.
Do another, like we did the fantasy meeting, I think we do another one of those to let them know what we would like to see happen.
We had the uh, president, vice president of the, of that group, of all those tracks. We had them at one of those meetings that the mayor had there at Burliners, and we have their names, so we could reach out to them.
Let's get them involved in their own rules. So we can, um, yeah, cause I think most of them have electronic things.
Yeah, if not, I think all of them have electronic uh, speakers.
And I like what you said, let them continue to make their money. That was good. All right, I see you put yourself on mute, so you were done with that.
He wants to make sure you have time to get to the closed session.
So that's the other one that we're gonna go ahead and um, just kind of uh, that on the back burner, not the back burner.
We're currently doing research, so that, this plays well. She can just work with that association. That's a great suggestion.
Yeah. All right. So did everyone review the upcoming events? And did you have any questions about any of the events? Yes, ma'am.
Am I on mute? No.
Nope.
Um, I didn't, isn't Election Day coming up this year? Is it on the calendar?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Same with the filing deadline, March thirty-first. And it'll be in the newsletter.
On elections, I see it.
Yeah, it'll be in the uh, newsletter on next week.
Got it.
Superb. And our ninety-ninth birthday celebration is on there, June tenth. I hope we checked with MML, yep. Okay, so.
MML moves back to their regular late week in June.
All right. Which MML legislative um, session opens tomorrow with a reception in Indianapolis. Okay, so um, uh, if we're done at this time, I'll accept a motion to uh, go into a closed session.
I'll make the motion.
Our town attorney.
I will second the motion.
Hiring. All in favor? All righty.